Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Could I ask you to stand? I'm going to ask councillor Harry Oto lead us in prayer, please.
Thank you, your worship. Would you please join with me in reciting the Lord's Prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. The light is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone and move on to the first order of business, if I may. It's the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of November 3rd, 2008. Moved by councillor Maves, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, planning item AM 2008-025, indirect conflict.
2008-25, so noted. Thank you. Any others? Councillor Wing?
Yes, mine as well. AM 2008-25, dealing with 4955 Clifton Hill. It's indirect. My spouse has a contractual relationship with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others? Okay, having seen none, we'll move on to the next order of business being planning matters. This time, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed cottage rental dwelling at 5127 River Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October 17th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hrlavich?
Thank you, your worship. This house is on the west side of River Road and is currently operated as a bed and breakfast. The property is identified on the map. It is located south of Seneca Street, just before Otter Street. The property is shown here as an existing house, a wide driveway on the front onto River Road, and the balance of the property is landscaped. The council previously considered an application for this site and rezoned it for a bed and breakfast as it currently operates. The applicant is now requesting use the dwelling for a cottage rental dwelling. This is a house that's rented in its entirety to tourists on either a daily or weekly basis. The official plan designates the lands as residential. They are also included in the official plan as part of the River Road Satellite District, which permits bed and breakfasts or alternative forms of accommodation, which are similar, as long as they maintain the residential character of the area. In looking at the official plan, we found that the cottage rental dwelling does form an alternative form of accommodation, which is similar to a bed and breakfast. There are no changes in the property or to the dwelling, and the number of bedrooms will be limited to four, and they would be rented to one group only. The special policies in the official plan, because this proximity to the tourist commercial, does allow for small-scale accommodations, and we will continue. We've had a number of applications in this River Road area for other vacation cottage rentals, so we'll continue to monitor the situation and make sure that there isn't an undue concentration that would have an impact on the surrounding area. The zoning for the property is zoned R2-2. It's a residential, single-family and two-family zone with provisions for bed and breakfast accommodations. Our bylaw actually uses the term tourist home, which is why it appears on your screen. They're also looking to recognize an existing interior side lot line, or side yard setback, rather, of .6 meters or two feet, rather than the required four feet. The property currently is, as I mentioned, a tourist home. There are three bedrooms rented to tourists and one for the owner of the building. We see this use of the building being quite similar to the current concentration. In fact, we see an advantage where guests arrive for bed and breakfast. Often, each bedroom is occupied by a person or a family, and they arrive in one car, so up to three cars could arrive, whereas renting the house is one unit, typically one or two cars. Therefore, we have found that this application does comply with the official plan. The nature is similar to the uses that are already permitted on the property, and provided the cottage rental is rented to one group of travelers and limited to four bedrooms, it would be compatible with the adjacent uses. Our recommendation, therefore, is the council approve the zoning amendment to add the cottage rental dwelling as a use on this property. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this? Okay? At this time, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Good evening. Welcome, Mrs. Freeman.
Thank you.
Yes. Do you wish to make any comments further to the presentation we've seen already?
No, the presentation was excellent. It outlined the fact that it's currently a bed and breakfast, and there would be no structural changes to the property. It would remain looking exactly the same, and it would actually be a benefit because the cars would be down to one to two against the current three.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of council who wish to ask a question of the applicant? Mr. Councillor Maves?
I'll move to recommendations.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll close the meeting first, though, at this point. No questions from members of council? Thank you very much. Then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, and I'll take the pleasure of counsel, councillor Maves, and councillor, moved to recommendations, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much, Mrs. Freeman. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit an electronic game establishment to reduce required parking spots at 4955 Clifton Hill. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October 24th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting. I'm sorry, I'll let you go on, first of all. Possibly the director first. I'll have you continue the presentation. So, I'm going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hrlavich?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, this property is located at the corner of Onida Lane and Clifton Hill. It's actually a building that was previously the Pilgrim Inn on Clifton Hill. The building's undergone extensive renovations. The applicant actually obtained the existing building in order to take advantage of certain rights and opportunities that the existing building allowed, rather than demolishing and starting redevelopment of the site from scratch. Again, the location of the property is on the northeast corner of Clifton Hill and Onida Lane, immediately east of Avenue. The property is kind of difficult to see here, but the area that's in gray, basically, the building occupies 100% of this site, and that's what you're seeing in front of you. The building is three stories plus a basement, and the proponent actually wishes to use that for various tourist commercial uses. The clerk, in addition to an amusement arcade and billiard hall, there would also be restaurants, retail uses, which are already established uses in this property. As I've outlined, the property is 500 square feet of land. The existing building is being altered for its current uses, and that is that includes a restaurant, theater, pinball, game establishment, a billiard hall, and other tourist attractions, including retail. The current zoning is tourist commercial. They've requested a site-specific change to add pinball and electronic game establishments as a specific use. They've also asked that there should be no loading base requirements for this development, and they've also asked that the property be allowed to have no required parking with this particular building. It also exceeds the lot coverage and minimum rear yard setback. As I've stated, those are legal nonconforming elements to this building because it preexists the zoning bylaw. The official plan designates the lands as tourist commercial. They're part of the Clifton Hill sub-district, where we expect to find a wide range of entertainment activities and other tourist-related establishments. The additional request for a pinball and electronic game is similar to other uses that are found on the Clifton Hill and the immediate tourist-serving area. The zoning of the property is tourist commercial, TC, and it's requested that they specifically add the pinball and electronic game establishment. Use the theater, as I've pointed out, restaurant, and other uses are already permitted. They also wish to eliminate the parking spaces. We don't have any concerns with respect to the electronic game establishment and billiard hall use. These are quite similar to other uses that we find on Clifton Hill and throughout our tourist-serving areas. The current standards for parking, they're seeking, the former use of the building as a hotel and restaurant and retail space was required to provide 46 parking spaces. There were only four or five parking spaces on-site. The balance of the customers are the walk to the side or they parked off-site. The building was legally existed before the passage of the current bylaw, and there's a parking deficiency of 41 spaces considered legal nonconforming. So, the fact that they required 46 spaces, they had four or five spaces on-site, they were deficient by 41 spaces, so they're legal nonconforming in that regard. The proposed uses, we did recalculate the number of spaces. Your report says 88 spaces. It does require 102 parking spaces, based on division on the second floor between an arcade and a bar that would exist there for 80 patrons. A parking demand study was done site specifically for this property. The Transportation Services Division is currently conducting a parking demand study for the whole of our tourist area. This proponent wished to go ahead of that study. They didn't want to wait until that study was completed by the city, so they hired their own consultant, did a parking demand study, and based on that parking demand study, under protocol of the municipality, found that only 21 parking spaces would be required to serve the use. That is, I mentioned earlier, 102 spaces are required. If we just use our bylaw standards and calculating the number of actual walk-ins based on similar uses that exist in the area, 21 spaces were demonstrated to be the requirement. Because the building is legal nonconforming, again, it enjoys particular uses that other properties may not, particularly if we were to tear the building down and start from scratch, it would lose its legal nonconforming use status. So, therefore, it has 41 spaces that are legal nonconforming. That's in excess of the 21 required parking spaces, so they're reducing the parking spaces to zero is actually not a situation, because it would fall within that legal nonconforming use. We're recommending, though, that we restrict the continued operation of this building to that laid out for the use, 250-seat restaurant, 80-seat bar, the arcade, the gaming arcade, the retail uses, so that they don't come back in the future and say, "Well, we only used up 21 of our outstanding parking spaces. We'd now like to expand the use to take advantage of the other 20 parking spaces." So, we're suggesting that we limit that to those uses. Therefore, relinquish his legal nonconforming status. Actually, be zoning the site to a legal use. Although they've requested that they not be required to provide any loading spaces, they have provided for a small delivery area built into the building, and we're recommending that we do accommodate that as a delivery area and recognize its smaller size than our bylaw would normally provide. Last but not least, recognize increased lot coverage of 100% and the rear yard setback that would be normally required under 79-200, because, again, it's an existing building and an existing configuration. We're therefore recommending that, or concluded that, the pinball and electronic game establishment as a use could be added, similar to other uses in the area. The number of parking spaces that they're seeking credit for fit within those that are already legal nonconforming, and that we would secure the parking space and provide for the lot coverage and rear yard setback. Therefore, we're recommending the addition of the electronic game establishment and those other changes that I have made to this council. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hrlavich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Good evening, and welcome.
Your worship, members of council. We prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which basically summarizes my letter dated November 13th.
Just for the record, Mr. Vaca, if you could just identify yourself and who you're representing?
Sure. The second slide indicates who I act for, and the logo on the screen indicates the firm I'm with.
Thank you.
So, we're here on behalf of Hoco Limited, Oaks Family, and various companies owned by the Berlin family. Collectively, as you may be aware, our clients own and operate the vast majority of the properties and businesses on Clifton Hill. With respect to the application before you, generally, our clients support the redevelopment. They believe it's a positive improvement to the Clifton Hill area, and it's a good redevelopment of an underused site, and it will result in compatible uses with existing uses on Clifton Hill. The relief being requested is threefold. First one is the addition of uses, pinball, electronic game machine establishment, and billiard uses. We have no objection to those uses. The second part of the relief, if I could back up just one slide, deals with the number and size of loading spaces. Once again, we have no objection with that part of the application. The final part of the application, being the elimination of parking requirements, the balance of my comments will focus on this part of the application. As Mr. Hrlavich has stated, the applicant is seeking a credit of 41 parking spaces through legal nonconforming uses, and this credit is being applied to the amount of parking spaces needed for the proposed uses pursuant to the Delcan parking rate study. Now, dealing with the Delcan study, it's important to note that the Foxy site, which was studied, was the existing arcade, attraction, fast-food restaurant, and sit-down restaurant uses of Hoco. Based on those observations, the study concluded that the existing parking requirements under the current zoning bylaw were excessive for the Hoco uses. And I believe it's fair to say that those conclusions were based predominantly on the pedestrian nature of Clifton Hill. Dealing with the Delcan conclusions. One by one, attractions, the current requirement is one parking space for every 50 square meters. Delcan, based on its observations of Hoco's attractions, is proposing one parking space for every 200 square meters, which is a 75% reduction. Their observations of Hoco's arcade uses led them to conclude that the current parking requirement of one space for every 40 square meters should be reduced by 90% to one parking space for every 400 square meters. Fast food restaurants, they concluded that the current requirement of one space for every five seats was excessive, and a more proper requirement would be one space for every 25 seats, an 80% reduction. Finally, for sit-down restaurants, once again, they believe one space for every five seats is excessive. They believe the requirement should be one space for every 20 seats, a 75% reduction. Our client's position, they do not object to parking relief so long as council directs staff to review parking demand study for all of Clifton Hill. Secondly, they want council to direct staff to develop an official plan policy to recognize credits for parking spaces for existing uses on Clifton Hill. I would submit that since the Delcan study used methodology outlined by the city, the study confirms that current parking requirements on Clifton Hill are excessive and exaggerated for this pedestrian-oriented area. Finally, our clients believe there should be fairness and equality among all of the Clifton Hill owners. And once again, I believe the irony of the application is that the existing uses of Hoco were studied by Delcan to project parking demand for the applicant's future uses. If, in the end, the applicant enjoys substantial reduction in parking demand, and the actual uses by Hoco that were studied to support the reduction do not, then this is a clear case of inequality. Now, we've prepared some brief charts on each of the sites in question. The applicant's site, the former Pilgrim Motor Inn site. As you can see, if you compare the current parking requirements, which we added 101 spaces, we'll give Mr. Menachelle the benefit of the doubt, and the proposed parking requirement of Delcan being supported by the city, you'll see that there is a difference of 80 or 81 parking spaces and a percentage reduction of 79%. If we were to apply those same numbers to our client's existing site, the Hoco site, you'll see that on a use-by-use basis, the percentage reduction is anywhere from 75 to 90%. At the end of the day, right now, as we speak, our client requires 401 parking spaces. If the Delcan study results were applied to our client's site, as they will be applied to the applicant's site if council approves it, only 85 parking spaces would be required. Finally, dealing with the Berlin site. Only two uses apply, attractions and sit-down restaurants. Once again, the percentage reduction is 79%. The number of parking spaces currently required is 116. If the new rules, I'll call them the new rules, apply to the Berlin site, then we're talking about a reduction of 96 parking spaces. So, we've done an overall comparison of the three sites. As you'll see, if everyone is treated fairly, that would be the result on Clifton Hill. And that's the result that our client is seeking. And to further illustrate the point, Section 2.39 of your zoning bylaw defines a parking space as being not less than 18 square meters. If the same rules do not apply, then the case of Hoco, if you multiply the 316 extra parking spaces they require by 18 square meters, it results in almost 1.5 acres of land that has to be used for parking. Probably more than that if you factor in parking aisles and access driveways. For the Berlin site, 91 parking spaces times 18 square meters results in almost half an acre. So, if the same rules don't apply to everyone, Hoco has to use one and a half acres of their site for parking that the applicant is benefiting from new rules. And Berlin has to use a half acre of its site for parking, which Delcan has confirmed is excessive. Therefore, in conclusion, what we're suggesting is that you add the following recommendations. I understand, my friend, Ms. Joe Beriti wishes that it be a separate motion. I have no problem with that. But the first recommendation, that the planning department undertake a parking demand study for Clifton Hill for arcades, attractions, fast food, and sit-down restaurants. And I've added retail, simply because the Delcan report did deal with retail. That aspect was not brought forward this evening because the applicant does not have any standalone retail uses, but we'd like the retail uses to be studied as well. Using the same methodology used in the Delcan study, we'd like staff to report back to council within 90 days with recommendations on the issue of parking requirements for Clifton Hill. So, the only thing I would suggest you delete from that paragraph is for a reduction in. The remainder of the paragraph is what I'm seeking be part of your motion. Second part of the motion, that the planning department develop a policy for consideration of council to amend Part IV of the official plan to allow for credits for parking spaces through, once again, through discussions with Mr. Beaman. It's his preference that the words "legal nonconforming" be deleted and replaced with existing. I have no problem with that. Uses for Clifton Hill, and report back to council within 90 days. Now, I've heard for the first time tonight that there is a parking study underway for the tourist area. I'm not sure what the timing for that is. It's our preference that council proceed to deal with Clifton Hill in advance of that study, simply because you already have a study that has come to a very firm conclusion, the Delcan study. And we wish that that applies to all of Clifton Hill as soon as possible. My clients may have some developments they wish to put in place before next summer. They don't want to wait till your current parking demand study goes through the cycle. Once again, we have no objections to what's being asked this evening. In fact, the Delcan study more or less confirms what my clients have believed all along, that the current parking requirements are greatly exaggerated and excessive for Clifton Hill. Those are my submissions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaca. We would like you to get some of your questions answered. There's questions from members of council as well. I'm going to ask the director of Parking and Transportation to handle that. Mr. Drenn, can you speak to the 90 days?
Your worship, with regards to the study itself, it's been a two-year process. We're going through a parking demand study for the tourist core, and it should come to conclusion within the 90 days, so we should be able to achieve that. And it's for the entire tourist core, which deals with all commercial development within the tourist core, which includes Clifton Hill. So, we should be able to meet that 90 days for the entire tourist core.
We will not be able to.
Sorry?
You said, "we will," or "will not be able to"?
We will be.
Okay, we will be. Okay, Mr. Vaca, anything further to?
Nope.
Okay. There's some questions that council may have for you, members of council? Yes, councillor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say, I guess, to Mr. Vaca, that I find it very reasonable what his clients are asking for, simply just a level playing field. Saying that what's good for one side of the street is actually good for the other side as well. My only ques- My only question, and I also, I guess, agree with the submission, that any further recommendation should be by way of separate motion. You're asking the planning department to basically undertake a consulting report for traffic on Clifton Hill, and then report back to this council within 90 days?
What I'm suggesting is, is the current Delcan study can be used as that report. The Delcan study has dealt with the five uses mentioned in the paragraph, and it has dealt with it specifically observing uses on Clifton Hill. So I'm suggesting to you, there's no reason to go beyond that study.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
So does the planning department undertake a parking demand study? Perhaps the planning department use the current Delcan parking study?
I worded it that way just in case council felt the Delcan study was not appropriate. I personally believe it is appropriate. So they could undertake a parking demand study by simply adopting the study that's already been done by Delcan.
Okay. In that case, your worship, I think that the 90 days, I guess, to report back to council would be optimistic if we're already using a study that's in place.
Sure. And I'd like to ask the Director of Planning or East Transportation Services, one or the other, to make comment. Mr. -- okay, Mr. Dren?
If I could just make a comment on that. With regards to the first recommendation, in using just the Delcan study, our demand, parking demand analysis included many, many studies that exist in the city today. And this applicant decided to use Delcan because they were out of phase. So what they did is they said, "We can't wait until this demand study is done within 90 days. We need an answer now." And they chose to go out and hire this consultant. And many have over the last two years. But we're coming to the end of the analysis phase of the study, and really, the first recommendation is really not necessary, other than we will have something within 90 days that will provide new rates throughout the tourist core.
Thank you. Mr. Hurlovich, does that seem to mesh with what you --
Thank you, your worship. That's part of what I was going to speak to. The other thing, though, that Mr. Vacca says is that he's looking for an equal playing ground, or playing field. Certainly, we feel that that is necessary, and that's the purpose of the study that Mr. Dren speaks to. But we always had, anybody who wishes to have something different has always done a study. So we had, Tussauds Wax Museum did one. The building that now houses the Spicy Olive Restaurant did their own parking demand analysis, because they felt that they were able to demonstrate a sufficient amount of walk-in trade. Certainly, if either the Berlins or Hoco recognized that they wanted to do something substantial on their property in 2009, they too could have undertaken a study, just as Mr. Manicella has for this property, or the other applicants did for their own properties. So that we're actually looking after the larger area, but anybody that has specific needs has always come in and applied sites specifically. We don't undertake site-specific studies for individuals. With respect to the second recommendation, our official plan actually says that legal nonconforming uses should be phased out. The whole idea is that we get rid of problems. And so what the solicitor is asking for is to actually create policies that would legitimize, I'm gathering, credits for parking spaces, credit for things that this council has specifically a policy on that says, "We want to get rid of." And in fact, that's what this application is about. They have a legal nonconforming hotel that doesn't comply. They've gone through a process to site-specific legitimately their use, their proposed new use. So in actual fact, they're getting rid of a legal nonconforming use and creating a legal use. That complies exactly with council's policy. So to create a policy that would give credits for parking spaces for legal nonconforming uses flies in the face of that policy, flies in the face of the Planning Act, I would suggest.
Thank you. Mr. Beeman?
I quite agree that, it seems to me that I agree that this business of providing credits for legal nonconforming uses does fly in the face of the Planning Act. And that's precisely why I want the reference to legal nonconforming uses removed from the motion, should council decide to make it. This practice is something I've never seen before, and I found it quite novel when I encountered it. It's always been my approach to things of this nature, to wait until I know more about it before commenting. And I only learned of this practice when this report was being prepared for council. It's why I spoke with Mr. Vacca about this particular thing, because I have concerns as to whether, in fact, endeavoring to put such policies in the official plan is, in fact, in the long-term interests of those who have legal nonconforming buildings. But if there's going to be a policy of sorts, it really should be pronounced in some form of formal document, because one of the concerns that Mr. Vacca finds is this is informal policy, and they're not sure if they're going to get the benefit of it when it comes their turn, because it's not written down anymore. And that's simply all it's saying. If this is available, we'd like to have it too. So one of the ways we thought we could get it, that is, I'm speaking from Mr. Vacca's client's point of view, one of the ways we thought we could get the benefit of it is if it's in the official plan. Now, in the discussion with Mr. Hurlovich, another possibility would be, we would put it in some other policy document. But the idea is, what Mr. Vacca is advocating for is that it be recorded somewhere, so that the next time he comes to the counter for somebody, he's sure that it's there for his client, too. That's the, I understand, the concern that Mr. Vacca has. So this is why I was hoping to get it to refer to existing uses, so that we wouldn't tie it right into legal nonconforming, because there's some real twists to the law in that area that I really don't think have been thoroughly thought through, particularly a recent case, which kind of revolutionized the way I certainly looked at legal nonconforming uses. I've tried, I've tried to find a common ground between myself and Mr. Vacca as far as this going ahead. I would recommend to council that there be some direction given to staff, that if this crediting practices continue, that there must be some kind of formal policy document brought to council, so council can endorse it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beeman. I pose another question to our Director of Planning with respect to the equity and fairness aspect of any future applications. Mr. Hurlovich, can you outline the policy that we've practiced in the past, or at least the procedure?
Yes, your worship. It's been the practice that any of those buildings, and there are many, Burger King is another one that received credit. It was previously a different use. They converted to Burger King. They received credits for parking spaces they didn't have. The credits are given to legal nonconforming uses. So that is, a building could be legal nonconforming because of its height. It therefore is allowed to enjoy that height. We can't make them take a floor off of the building at some point because it's changing its use. A legal nonconforming use then may enjoy a benefit from having less parking on its property than the bylaw requires. And so legal nonconforming uses would enjoy that benefit. And it may be that the Berlin property would be such a property, I'd suggest that the Hoco property, that's about 25 or 30 acres, probably has far in excess of the parking that would be required for any and all of the uses in totality on that site. So probably, the Hoco property wouldn't benefit in any event. The Berlins, if they were to come in and apply to convert their motel into an arcade, would be given the same privilege. It's part of what's built into being a legal nonconforming use. We look at what are the aspects that are legal nonconforming? And then, when they change the use, if they require 50 parking spaces for the new use, and they have a credit of 40 parking spaces, they got a credit for 40 parking spaces, but they have to provide 10 new parking spaces somewhere else. If the new use is only 30 spaces, but they have a credit for 40, then they don't have to provide any parking. And in essence, that's the kind of situation we have. We've gone through it again and again. As I say, Burger King, there've been other properties that we've dealt with with respect to this. So quite honestly, you know, if we take out the words "legal nonconforming," then it's a to allow credits for parking spaces on Clifton Hill. Well, if the property has parking on it, they're going to get credit for those parking spaces, just as I've outlined. If they had 40 parking spaces, they now require 50, they're going to get credit for 40 parking spaces. But the new use is going to require that they provide 10 parking spaces, unless they do their own parking demand study that says they don't need 50. You know, we're back into the same thing, which takes us then to the first point. We're doing an overall study. Mr. Dren has outlined, it's going to come back to this council within 90 days. So in essence, it may address some of the concerns raised here. But we already look at all the credits. That's part of what's legal nonconforming.
Thank you. Mr. Beeman?
Perhaps this would address Mr. Vacca's client's concern, that staff be directed to prepare a written policy detailing the methodology to be used by staff for the calculation of parking credits for legal nonconforming uses. Would that address your client's concern?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah. Now, go --
Staff be -- I know you wrote it down, so you --
(laughing).
Mr. Vacca?
Your worship, that addresses the second point. The first point, however, my concern is the Delcan study examined Hoco's current uses. It came out with a 79 percent average reduction in parking demand when you average out those four uses. I'm not sure what this other study is going to come up with. So how can I justify to my client, if the new study that's being done, I'm not sure if it's focused only on Clifton Hill, sounds like it's focused on all the tourist areas, if it comes back and says 30 percent reduction? Where's the equality? Where's the justification for that? When Delcan currently has studied Hoco's uses, existing uses, and Mr. Manicella is getting the benefit of that, and we have no problem with that. But we have a problem if the applicant gets a reduction of 79 percent for his property. We're waiting for the next study, and that one comes back at 30 percent? And we're only getting 30 percent when the Delcan study examined our current uses? I see no fairness in that, and I have a real difficulty with that.
Mr. Hurlovich, can you address that? Please?
I can't add anything to what I've already said.
Thank you. Perhaps, Mr. Dren?
Your worship, just further to that, in all cases, just as the challenges are to what's in the zoning bylaw, every applicant has a right to prepare their own parking demand analysis. What we're trying to do with, and we wouldn't allow them to use this one, it would have to be based on their own merits and what they're putting forward. If they were putting forward a development that included, you know, various options, they would have to do their own parking demand analysis, just as every other applicant has. What we're looking at overall is a potential for reduction in parking requirements in some of the areas. But still, the applicant or applicants have a right to go out and do their own parking demand analysis. So in this case, no, under normal circumstances, we wouldn't accept a parking demand analysis done for one client to be used for another client. It wouldn't be acceptable to staff.
Thank you. Mr. Vacca, does that answer your question?
Your worship, I mean, we can agree or disagree. All I can say is, when that study does come, within the next 90 days, keep in mind that Delcan has recommended a 79 percent reduction for Clifton Hill. If that other study is anything less than that, myself and all my clients will be here, strongly recommending to you that the proper reduction is what Delcan has done, only for Clifton Hill, examining Hoco's current uses. That's the proper reduction, in my opinion.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Vacca by members of council? Thank you for your submission, Mr. Vacca. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Having seen none, we'll call on the solicitor or the applicant on the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would like to thank Monsieur Hurlovich, Schmeck, and Bryce of the Planning and Development Department for their guidance and assistance over the last several months with respect to this application. My client and I have read the staff report and agree with the recommendation, and we therefore kindly request your approval of same, without any conditions attached, as outlined in the staff report. We've also read the correspondence and listened to Mr. Vacca's presentation on behalf of his clients. We completely support the request made by his clients. However, we do not believe that the request should be part of the motion to consider our client's application. If you were to consider the request being sought by Mr. Vacca's clients, that request should be considered as a separate motion, and should not be attached as a condition to our client's application. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Gilberti? Okay, thank you very much for your submission. At this point, then, members of council, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Counsel Fisher moves the recommendation, seconded by Counsel Carrio. Any further discussion or comments? Having seen none, we have the declaration of two conflicts remaining. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Any further motions? Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Your worship, further to Mr. Beeman's comments, I'd like to make a motion that staff prepare a written policy detailing the methodology to be used by staff for the calculation of parking credits for legal nonconforming uses. I would so move that motion. And I also like to say that I understand Mr. Vacca's concerns, seeing one side of the street going down by 80 percent. He'd just like to see the other side go down, and I understand that they'll be back if that's not the case.
Specify where?
On Clifton Hill, your worship.
Good. Okay. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Di Addati. Any further comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you again. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a second dwelling unit deck and porch additions at 8504 McGary Drive. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October 24, 2008, by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Attorney of Municipal Law shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to call on the Planning Director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, your worship. The slide in front of you is the property in question. I would point out that on the right-hand side of the picture, you can see a small shelter. That's the entrance to the basement unit, and it's part of the application. And I raise it just so you can know. The property is located at the corner of McGary Drive and Parkside Road, in the area of the single-family detached dwellings. The property is depicted here. The building itself is the red hatched area of the building. The landscape along around the property is illustrated in green. The covered porch is the white area on the left-hand side that's outlined in red. This is the covered porch, that's the entrance to the basement stairs. And then, at the back of the building, is a raised deck. The raised deck projects 2.5 meters into the rear yard, and then there's a stairwell that projects further beyond that that's allowed by the zoning bylaw. The applicant has requested a zoning change for a lot that's almost 6,000 square feet in area. It has a raised bungalow on the property. The building was illegally converted to have a second unit in the basement. They constructed the covered entrance to provide access to that basement unit in the exterior side yard, and then they've extended the deck with a set of stairs that exceeds the zoning bylaw requirements. Under the, the planning department looked at a number of matters. Under the planning, provincial policy statements, rather, the province is encouraging municipalities to intensify housing in order to meet our future long-term needs, and to prevent urban sprawl, and therefore, second dwelling units in single detached houses is a form of intensification advocated by the province. The lands are designated residential in the official plan. This designation provides for a range of housing -- This designation provides for a range of housing units, single detached, semi-detached, duplex, triplex dwellings, all of these low-density forms of housing and would be permitted in any residential area. There are some guidelines within our official plan. It does say that residential development is to be integrated to achieve compatibility and sensitivity with the surrounding developments. The Garner Neighborhood, or Garner Secondary Plan, rather, encourages a variety of housing types to meet all the needs and resources of residents of the city. The dwelling retains its appearance as a single detached dwelling, and therefore, is compatible in terms of its form and massing with the surrounding area. It does achieve some residential intensification without significantly impacting on the surrounding properties. The property is currently zoned R one E, residential, single-family, one E zone. The, they're seeking permission to add a second dwelling unit. The, they're also seeking permission to recognize the covered entrance at the side that leads to the basement unit, and also to allow the steps, steps to project into the rear yard. And then there's a provision which reflects the lot coverage of the property. The applicant's been, our application has been reviewed with respect to the addition of the second dwelling unit. Its character, its appearance in the neighborhood does not act on the surrounding dwellings. In fact, it looks very different, very little different from that, from the day that was completed construction. The addition of the second dwelling unit doesn't change the size or external dimensions of the building, continues to have a form which is similar to other detached dwellings in the area. There's little discernible impact in terms of its appearance. The second dwelling, our second dwelling unit will require its own parking space, and this could be accomplished by widening the driveway from four and a half meters to five and a half meters. The requested zoning change as well, the bylaw requires dwellings to be set back four point five meters from an exterior side yard. The covered entrance projects one point two meters at four feet into that required side yard, so instead of having a fifteen-foot setback, it has an eleven-foot setback from the exterior lot line because of the open construction of that porch covering, to provide that it is acceptable because it's fairly unobtrusive. The, the deck is permitted to project two point five meters into the required rear yard, and in fact, the deck is only two point five meters. But there is a staircase that leads from that deck down to the ground, and that staircase projects an additional two point six feet or point eight meters into that required rear yard. So they're seeking permission to allow that stairway to continue to go from the deck down to the ground, and because it's not occupiable space, we don't believe that there are going to be additional impacts from the staircase. The, the deck is taller off the ground than two feet, and because of this, our bylaw requires that we incorporate that as lot coverage. So by the time we consider the area of the house, plus the area of the deck, the total lot coverage is four point three percent, or forty point three percent instead of forty percent. So we see this as being a very minor increase beyond what the zoning would normally allow. Because the building was converted illegally into a, to have a second dwelling unit, we will require that the property have any necessary building permits to ensure that the building does meet the Ontario Building Code, should this council decide to approve the zoning. We've concluded that the, the second dwelling unit is supported by provincial policy and does conform with the official plan. The dwelling still reflects the character of the surrounding residential area, and that the requested coverage, or covering for this exterior side yard is unobtrusive, and the deck encroachment and the lot coverage are minor. Our recommendation is that council recognize the second dwelling unit in the dwelling as well as the existing deck and the roofed over side entrance. Having made that statement, the Planning Act was changed a couple of years ago because, again, the province is encouraging second dwelling units, that if council passes a bylaw to allow this second dwelling unit, it's not appealable. So not to stand our typical speech that we give, a bylaw for second dwelling units are not appealable. And so I just bring that to council's attention as well, and to the attention of the public. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovic. And again, you qualified the matter with respect to the appeal aspect, and I'm going to just ask at this time that anybody other than the applicant who has any questions with regard to the proposed bylaw amendment come forward to speak. Is there anyone other than applicant who wishes to come forward? Please come forward, sir. Just be kind enough to identify yourself and just adhere to the ten-minute speaking role. Thank you. Your name and address?
My name is Alex Imrie. I live at seventy seventy-nine Parkside Road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. I appreciate your time. I'm not alone. I come with a great portion of my neighborhood who are somewhat offended, to be honest with you, by this application itself. The process that we are at right now, to me, started six months ago, seven months ago, to be honest with you, when the person who is applying for the amendment illegally, and I emphasize the illegally, converted their home to a second dwelling unit and started renting it out. Myself, along with other neighbors, were in touch with city officials, numerous city officials. At various points, we're all given different messages to the effect that sometimes, one message I was given, for example, from a city official was that the, the owner of the property was given thirty days to vacate because of the illegality of what they had done. Months transpired, nothing happened. To me, it boils down to two issues. Personally, I have nothing against my neighbor. She's a lovely lady. That's not what this is about. It boils down to two issues for me. The first is that it is obtrusive. It is obtrusive to everyone who looks at this deck, at the garbage that's piled under the deck. It's obtrusive to every single person around who purchased a home in good faith within the last five years, being told that this was a single-family dwelling neighborhood. We purchased homes not cheaply. We pay huge amounts of property taxes. And it was interesting listening earlier to city council's discussions about where the money is going to come from. And I'm wondering if the money for this, that's going to be earned by rental, is coming from my pocket, honestly? Because the value of my property is going to go down. The value is going down when these things happen. As soon as this happens, it's going to set a precedent. And yes, our neighborhood does have designations, but they're in certain locations, and everyone was aware of them at the time that they purchased their homes. We didn't purchase a home, and then all of a sudden, you know, we shouldn't be told five years later, oh, by the way, now we're going to change the designation across the street from your house, and your property is no longer worth as much. That doesn't seem fair whatsoever. As I mentioned, the, the other aspect is, is the obtrusiveness. I brought a photo with me, and this is tonight, and if I might pass it around, would that be okay? This is the underneath of the deck that's visible from Parkside Road, and this is on a good day. During the summertime, there were times when there were up to ten bags of rotting garbage being put underneath this deck, because the people who were renting the property did not officially have any place to get rid of their garbage. They would put it out beside the mailboxes, and it would sometimes sit there for a week because they wouldn't realize that the city won't pick it up. They were only, they were only allowed two bags each. So they would simply store it under the house. And this is across the street. This is open to anyone who drives by. I can't understand how that isn't obtrusive. The parking issue is mentioned as well. There's oftentimes when the, and I don't blame the people, when the, the current people who are living in the basement are parked up on the lawn perpendicular to the house, are parked up on city property beside the house, numerous times today when I left, their van was sitting up on the lawn. And that shouldn't be allowed. There should be some sort of process that says before you're allowed to do this, you have to prove that you have everything in place. Again, all of this was done illegally before any advice was given, and it seems that we're Lastly, I just can't imagine, I can't understand how someone can go through something backwards, creating all of this, spending thousands of dollars, and then come and look for permission, especially once things were done improperly in the first place, and the permission be given. I can't understand that. And again, I'm not alone. My, half of my neighborhood is behind me. They're here, ready to say the same thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Imrie. Is there anyone else other than applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? We understand the neighbors that are present, but that's fine. You're welcome to come forward. Yes, sir? Your name and your address.
Rob Dunn, eight four nine four McGary Drive. Also have some pictures. If I'll pass them out to, if everybody has a package, just passing along. And also a letter that received, two letters, one which everybody can have, and one I just received now at six o'clock from another neighbor. We moved into, we moved into our neighborhood three and a half years ago and built our new house. It was zoned, single-family, residential. And like Alex said before, paying very high taxes since then. All our neighbors wanted to remain a single-family dwelling. It's a family neighborhood. I went around last night with my wife, or last week, I should say, and we collected over twenty signatures in our neighborhood. Everybody was opposed. Everybody that was home that was opposed to this application. We have a letter from a RE/MAX representative. Everything in that letter is fairly straightforward. Many of the points have been made already. By approving this amendment, I think the Niagara Falls Council, sending the wrong message to people, that you don't need building codes, you don't need work permits, don't need planning policies. If you want something, go ahead and do it, and then change your mind, and then ask for an amendment. Okay? This is, like I say, to my neighbors, to ourselves, okay? It's totally, totally unacceptable. Like I say, if everybody takes a look at the pictures and the other pictures that we've seen, it is very obtrusive. I mean, anybody can take a look and see that this is not the type of, of neighborhood that, that we plan to get into when we move to this area. And, and same thing with the, with the deck and the, the other infringements on the back. I mean, if you look at the pictures from, from our house, we're a next-door neighbor, and same as Alex said, she's a very lovely lady, but I mean, there's, there's equity in your house, there's a lot of other concerns, where being nice, you know, doesn't get you too much. And you can see from the pictures, you know, the, the deck, the problems that we have and all that. So I just ask the council to, if they would please oppose the proposed amendment.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Dunn, members of council? Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is, sorry, I'm going to hear, I'm going to hear from the applicant right now, I'm sorry. The applicant, like, have them come forward, please? I'm sorry about that. Mrs. Sardar? Yes?
Good evening. I would just like to let everybody know, I'm really sorry if I've offended my neighbors or anybody, but this apartment, the apartment that is in the basement was pre-approved by the city when I got the house built, and I have been paying property tax for the last five years on this house and on the basement, the second apartment in the basement. The deck was approved by and inspected by the building department. Everything was done according to the law. That is why I would request this to be approved.
Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. May I have that verified by staff?
Yes, I'm just going to ask for that to be done. Who can address that? Mr. Hurlovic, I know our chief building official is not here.
Yeah, through your worship, clearly, when this is spoken at staff, there were a number of concerns that were raised by the building department, and the fact that the permits weren't...
...taken out. So I'll go by the comments that are right in the plan report and in the question that I was having to see.
Mrs. Sardar, can you tell us who gave the approval that you believe was given to you?
I, I applied for a building approval for the deck, and it was given and inspected. Only, I think, the stairs, the contractor who built the stairs did not build them according to the approved plan, but it was the same width that was, the deck was of the same size. It's only the stairs that the city has objection to, not to the deck.
Did you have a building permit at that time?
Yes, I did.
Did you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
Can you translate that to us, please?
Just want to clarify, as the comments, it does talk about stairs, and it also talks about the entrance to the basement itself, that there was no permit acquired for that. So those are the two.
So the dwelling has, the dwelling unit, the second dwelling unit has not been approved, but the construction to allow for your basement entrance?
The, the entrance has not been approved, but the dwelling, the second dwelling, I have been taxed for it for the last five years as a second apartment. The basement itself is approved, it was built by the builder. This is a new house that I bought, and the building, I don't know who he got the approvals from, but the tax department told me that I was being taxed for the, for a second apartment, which is my basement apartment.
Mr. Beeman?
Mr. Mayor, who might speak to that? The law in Ontario has long been that...
Assessment, the assessment authorities don't care what the zoning of the property is. They will, they will assess the property as to how they find it's being used at the time and set the value accordingly. So that, and the usual way that municipalities were on the losing, were on the losing end of that one because of all those industrial and commercial properties that used to be tax farms on the outside of, of municipalities, and that was when it was litigated ad infinitum between cities and taxpayers. And it was always, the conclusion of the Court of Appeal was always the same, it's what the use is, not what's a legal use.
Okay. Mr. Pete, I'm sorry, Counselor Peter Angelo, you've been very patient, I'm sorry, let you...
That's exactly what I was going to say, was that impact does not take into consideration the actual zoning of the property. So I think Mr. Beeman outlined it properly.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments to make with regard to the use and zoning? Obviously, the zoning has not been approved, to give you that right for the additional dwelling unit.
Basically, it's a very big issue for me. I have to rent out the lower portion because I'm a single earner. I have an eighty-one-year-old mother who lives with me. She does not get any pension from the government of Canada, as she was sponsored by my son for ten years. As a single person who is earning and with the increasing cost of living, there is no way that I can make the ends meet on one job and look after my eighty-one-year-old mother. As my neighbors know, I had to rent it out. I did not rent it out for the last four years. I lived in it, but out of necessity, in the last year, this year, when the gas prices and the food costs started going up so drastically, I had to take that action and rent out the lower portion. And that is why, one of the reasons why I would request it to be approved, even if it is not approved... is not approved for a long portion, even if I'm given a relief of two to three years, that would help me out.
Any questions of Mrs. Sardar? Yes, please come forward.
Hi. I'm Mrs. Sardar's neighbor, and you know, this is so nothing personal, but you know, I'm.
Name, please.
Corey Dunn. I'm right beside her, 8494, our house is in that first picture. We all could tell, we all know that things are tough. We're both working one and a half jobs. We understand when we, we didn't over-mortgage ourselves buying into this home either. My husband was just very good at saving his money. We understand her situation, but we all have them. And single, taking care of a mom, or being married and taking care of three kids, and our tax benefits are less. I, I, I don't, I, I don't, I believe in love thy neighbor, and I'm really sorry this has come like this, but personally, everyone here could tell you a story of how we're all trying to get back by in our neighborhood. And it is equity. I, we don't have, we're not going to have a pension either, neither one of us are lucky enough to have that. This is our equity. This is why we bought into this neighborhood.
Mrs. Dunn, I think we should obviously be aware that we're applying planning principles to.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions of the applicant by members of council? Anything else you'd like to ask, Mrs. Sardar?
No, that is all.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Councilor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I, I mean, I listened to the applicant's submission, and while I am empathetic to, to her reasoning behind why she, she rents out the basement of her home, I still have to go back to Mr. Imbry's submission and the other residents' letters that they've sent us, and I think that they're absolutely correct. I mean, they bought a house in this area on the premise that it was single-family, and that's the way it should remain. I think how they have bought next to an empty lot, and that lot was then brought back for the rezoning change, we might be in a different situation, but we're not. I mean, it's a single-family home, and it should remain that way. I will make a motion, Your Worship, that we deny the recommendation.
A motion by Councilor Peter Angelo, second by Councilor Wing. Any further discussion by members of council? Having seen none, all those in favor of the motion, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your presence here this evening. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit modifications to the draft plan approval for the Warren Woods East draft plan of subdivision. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Monday, October 27, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the, notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovic?
Thank you, Worship. This property involves a, a draft plan approval for a plan of subdivision, that is, it's a property that already has draft plan approval on it. We're modifying that, there's some road changes and some, some land use changes, and then going along with that are some zoning bylaw amendments that are necessary to implement that. The property in question is located at the northwest corner of the, or sorry, is that on the west, on the west side of Kayla Road, north of Brown Road, it abuts the Hydro Corridor, the former Hydro Corridor on the south. The property is depicted in this plan of subdivision. The lots that are yellow are single detached houses, lots that are orange are semi-detached houses, lots that are brown are for townhouse or apartment development. The applicant had previously proposed the southeast corner, that is, the right corner, there's a brown block, and there are five or six lots that are depicted in yellow. That was one block with a crescent street that came in and was to be developed with single-family houses. The applicant has now extended this new street east-west, so that comes out directly to Kayla Road, thus allowing him to bring in services from Kayla Road directly into the development. That change then has meant that the previous road pattern was no longer efficient, therefore he's asked for, changed for the, what's block 188, it's the brown triangular-shaped lot that would now be used for townhouses or apartments. The, there have been some other changes as well, so the first street that curves in a north-south direction, there's a cul-de-sac. So that is one of the changes that we have worked with the developer to accomplish, as well as there have been some changes in parkland and so on. The, the, those are the, the changes of this particular development. The very dark green angular band towards the right-hand side of the slide is the water course, which is part of one of the branches of the Warren Creek, and water course, and it will be subject to upgrading and improvements through redevelopment of this site. In fact, this slide depicts the overall redevelopment of the, the water course, so the subdivision is depicted with the water course cutting through on the lower right-hand side. The creek would then extend southerly beyond the Hydro Corridor, where it would meet up with another branch of the Warren Creek. That branch of the Warren Creek would be reconstructed. In fact, right now, it flows to the middle of this subdivision, so it's proposed that the creek is diverted. This whole diversion and upgrading of the creek was subject to an environmental assessment conducted by the city and approved by the province. We have since gone through detailed design stages to create a meandering water course within the course, stream channel itself, and as well to create a stormwater detention area, which is depicted at the, in the Y of the two water courses. So as this creek and this creek, there's a stormwater detention pond. In fact, I should have mentioned, previously there was a stormwater detention pond in the plan of subdivision, which was to serve a temporary basis. You might have seen a letter from Ms. Grandoni saying that we shouldn't take the stormwater pond out of there, it was a temporary pond. So in fact, what we're doing now is that we would create the permanent pond in this location to serve this development, as well as some actually exist there, other upstream lands that are yet to develop. The, as I mentioned, there is already an existing draft plan approval on these lands and a related zoning bylaw amendment. The plan was draft-approved in 2007, containing approximately. Changes made to the conditions of draft approval in November of 2007 to reflect certain requests of a warning clause to be inserted into offers to purchase and sale on these particular properties. The changes to the zoning bylaw were approved in principle, but we've not yet brought the bylaw back to be passed. The changes in this development, therefore, will end up with a total of 318 dwelling units, of which 163 of those are single detached lots, 18 lots are for semi-detached units, resulting in 36 dwellings. There are 10 blocks of land for on-street townhouses, resulting in 44 units. And then the new block that I mentioned, block 188, which could accommodate either 36 townhouses or 75-unit apartment buildings, just depending on which configuration. The applicant has asked for a blended zone that would allow them to have either townhouses or apartments on that site. And I've already mentioned the parkland, there are some walkways through there to connect to the parkland, as well as a trail along the water course channel. The primary changes, as I pointed out, are the new road crossing in that east-west and the residential block on Kayla Road. The council has the ability to make changes to draft plans approval, either to conditions or to design, without going through a, a public meeting process. However, we did feel that the changes were significant enough that we felt the public should be advised of these changes, and that's why we're having this meeting tonight. The Warren Creek realignment, as I've mentioned, has been subject to an environmental assessment. We've also completed the detailed engineering design for that. The east channel is to be the first phase of the stormwater construction, including the pond to accommodate this development. The creek has been identified in our, that is, the city's capital budget as a category three, but it would require this council to include it in the 2009 budget. To be developed this year, so we'd have to allocate the actual money. So it was, as I say, a category three. However, the developer has offered to assist the municipality by financing and undertaking a portion of those capital works, and in exchange, he would receive credit development charges that would be applicable to this, or he would receive repayment if development charges are collected for this area. We have already used this method as a municipality in Deerfield Estates and Edgewood Estates in the Garner neighborhood to the north of McLeod Road. The reconstruction of the creek will require a financial agreement with the city to address those details and the credit program, that is a condition that's attached to the report. We also require the approval of Hydro One to construct the creek across the Hydro Corridor. The stormwater channels are, and the pond will be transferred to the city for its ownership. The, we do feel that the change in the subdivision does retain a compatible mix of dwelling units. The growth pattern and the lauding represents an efficient use of land, and the applicant is actually achieving a 70% of single and semi-detached units and 30% of multiple units. The site-specific zoning is R3. Those are provisions that would allow for single detached, semi-detached, and on-street townhouses. There are some additional changes. That is that we would require a front yard depth of six meters, allowing a vehicle to park in front of the building, a four-meter setback for the on-street townhouses, allowing townhouse development to have coverage up to 60%, and requiring a separation distance of 1.8 meters between the, the townhouse blocks. The developer asked for a reduced rear yard along the Hydro Corridor and Water Course Channel. We're recommending that we maintain the city's boundary at 7.5 meters. And as well, I mentioned block 88, that's the new block for either townhouses or apartments. And they're seeking an additional height on that block beyond the current standard zoning of 12 meters. Now 12 meters would be to accommodate architectural roof features. You would have seen in your agenda, a letter from Thompson Rogers asking that, that the current height permitted in the R4 zone is 10 meters, 30 feet. They're asking for 12 meters to accommodate the roof. Thompson Rogers is asking that the bylaw then say that it's 12 meters for a three-story building plus roof. The. Therefore, we've concluded that the proposed modifications to this subdivision are appropriate. They are, do comply with the provincial policy statement, the official plan, the Garner Neighborhood Secondary Plan. The recommended zoning is, is suitable, will also provide for the protection of the water course. The subdivision will be to go ahead of the city's channelization facility, and therefore the developer has undertaken to assist with the project and the financing and the construction. This will require an agreement with the city, these are all listed as conditions within the report. Therefore, we're recommending approval of the plan of subdivision, subject to the condition of that report. The balance of the recommendations are the standard reports with respect to signing, giving notice, and the fact that this will expire after three years unless he seeks an extension, and that the detailed, the zoning will be brought back at a later date for council to pass. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovic. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34 subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship. My name is Bob Odell, and members of council, I am with Warren Woods. Briefly, we have met with staff, we have reviewed the report, which is before you tonight, and the recommendation, and we concur with the recommendation. We have also received a copy of the letter from Thompson Rogers. We have reviewed that with staff and find no difficulty with the request as made by Thompson Rogers. With that, we would request approval by the council for this recommendation, this subdivision, and if there's any questions, I'll be available to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Odell? Okay, having seen none, thank you very much, Mr. Odell. At this point, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed bylaw amendment is now concluded. We have motions, we will present the draft plans to council, second by Councilor Fisher. Any comments or questions to add to this council? If you have any in favor. Motion, Mr. Perry, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at 4218 Porridge Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act, but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on November 10, 2008. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And again, I'm going to call on the planning director to explain the purpose of the application.
Thank you, Worship. The picture in front of you is the apartment building in question. It's immediately north of the medical building on Portage Road, north of the Pontiac Dealer. The location of the property is shown here, on the east side of Portage Road, south of Virginia Street. It's slightly north of an extension of Gallenger Street, if it were to go through. The, there are a number of commercial properties actually to the west of this property, as well as to the, the north. I mentioned the medical building immediately to the south. The, this is the site plan of the property. Existing building is outlined in red, the extensive landscaped area around three sides of the building, and there's a parking lot on the south side of the building. The applicant proposes to convert the existing 18-unit rental building to condominium. Condominium would be, permit ownership of each unit, and the common areas such as halls, driveways, open space would be shared by the condominium corporation. We do have a municipal policy that says that where the vacancy rate is below 3%, that we will not, we will discourage conversion of rental units to condominium. In looking at the most recent data from Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, based on their October 2007 survey, the vacancy rate for all apartment units is 3.2%. This does, is above the, of our policy. The, as the city clerk noted, there's no Planning Act requirement for this. We did give notice to the tenants of the building. I gave you a copy of the, the notice that went to the tenants. You recall that in a previous meeting you were asked that we advise the tenants each time when we have such a situation, that's what their rights and regulations are, and that is, the tenants cannot be evicted due to conversion. You have the right to refuse the purchase if offered to them. The rents cannot be increased based solely on the fact that it's converted to a condominium ownership, and they are regulated by the provincial guidelines regarding the Tenant Protection Act. Act. The owner is obliged to advise the tenants that he does propose to convert the building, and he has demonstrated that he gave that information. Therefore, we're recommending approval of the plan of condominium, subject to a number of conditions that are set out at the back of the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirlovich. Are there any questions from members of council? Okay, then, at this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of condominium. You're welcome to come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. Please come forward.
My name is Carla Rienzo, and I'm a tenant at forty-two eighteen Portage Road. I'm not here to object to the proposal, but rather, I think myself and a number of the tenants in the building have a good variety of questions and concerns. First of all, there aren't eighteen units, there's nineteen. One of the disputes that I have is concerning the vacancy rate in Niagara Falls. It's understood that there has to be more than three percent vacancy rate. It seems to me that the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation vacancy statistics show that in October of two thousand and six, the vacancy rate was four point three percent. October two thousand and seven, it was four percent. April two thousand and eight, it is three point two percent. And now, we are waiting for the results of the October two thousand and eight vacancy rate, which won't be available or published until December eleventh, two thousand and eight. It would be premature at this stage to say that the vacancy rate is at or above three percent at this stage. We should be waiting till December eleventh to find out what it actually is. Given the obvious steep and unwavering decline in the rental vacancies, it's unacceptable to agree to convert forty-two eighteen Portage Road into condominiums until the new statistics are available. The statistic of three point two percent vacancy rate provided in my landlord's application reflects all surveyed apartments in Niagara Falls. Given that forty-two eighteen Portage Road is comprised of eighteen one-bedroom apartments and one studio apartment, the data collected and used in his application should reflect only the vacancy rate for one-bedroom apartments in Niagara Falls, Zone Four. The source for this information should not be from the report. The source for this information should be from the report to be published December eleventh, two thousand and eight, not April two thousand and eight, again, given the historical decline in the vacancy rate. Beyond that, as a tenant in that building for twenty-five years, I've noticed that there have been ongoing maintenance issues, and I would want to know, if I were to buy a condominium unit in this building, how would these maintenance issues be better addressed? They, I have taken this landlord to maintenance hearings twice. One would have thought after the first time, he would have said, whoa, we got a tenant here who's got her eye on things. Twice. Once was for, and I'll refer to my notes. Once was for Okay, I can't find it in my notes, but it is, it is here. Okay, here it is. Once was for malfunctioning washers and dryers. Door locks on the entrances were malfunctioning. There were, there was a torn carpet on the stairs on the exterior of the building, and the snow removal has been an ongoing problem. The second one, oh, and the, of course, the results of the hearing were, he had to have these appliances fixed, this carpet replaced, the door locks repaired. There was really no mention of the snow removal. The second hearing was for an intercom that, for one year, I was able to demonstrate wasn't working in my unit. I can't speak for the other tenants and how their intercom was functioning. For one year, I had a good twelve visits from an inspector and service technician to repair the intercom, and it ceased to fail. Unfortunately for me, at that hearing, the Ontario Rental Housing Tribunal adjudicator said it wasn't, it wasn't necessary for the landlord to give me an operable intercom. He merely had to show that he's trying to fix it. So if I'm in need of an ambulance, if I have a guest coming over, if I have a pizza delivery, I will not know if somebody's outside, if they don't have a cellphone to call me. By the way, my intercom is currently working, because the day before the hearing, he had a technician come in and fix it finally. But it shouldn't take a hearing to get that kind of maintenance. My concern is this: if the maintenance issues that have been ongoing and of extremely serious nature have not been addressed in an orderly and civilized fashion to date, what protection will we have as condominium owners once this conversion is made? We have a landlord who clearly doesn't appreciate the laws that are established by the Residential Tenancy Act. Some of the other issues that we've been dealing with are, have to do with housekeeping. There has never been an established licensed staff or authorized staff to come in to clean the interior of the building. It's, his family has been, has been doing it, and not the most motivated group of people, I regret to have to say. The vacuuming, sporadic, maybe it passed down the hallway, never, baseboard to baseboard, floor washing in the common areas is with a string mop. The dirt isn't removed, it's spread around. The corners have never been cleaned. Window sills in the common areas have never been cleaned.
Mrs. Rienzo, I do appreciate your, your expression, your frustration, but
It's, it's
Your time is about two minutes left, but
Okay.
We're dealing with planning matters as opposed to
If, okay, if this application is approved, the tenants want to know two things. And it sounds like it's already been established. We, we do not want to be evicted if someone comes along and says, I want apartment two oh five, and here's my money. We want to know that our apartments are secure, no matter what offer is on the table. We understand we have first right of refusal, and if we refuse, we want to remain tenants, renting at our, at the existing rate with the accepted annual increase. We don't want to share in any maintenance costs that condo owners will have to, have to pay. And we also want to understand, how are the individuals who buy condominium units going to pay their utility bills? How will their utility fees be established? And we also want to make it clear that if the landlord realizes any tax benefits as a result of this conversion, for the record, I understand that as a tenant, the tenants must share in the, in the rebates that the landlord will be receiving. I want to know how we will be informed of these, and I want to know if it results in a rebate check to us, or whether we will see a reduction in our rent, our monthly rent. I think that's all I have within my time limit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your submission. I think, yes, Councilor Peter Angel.
Yeah, your worship, I'm wondering if we can get Mrs., or Ms. Rienzo, any answers to her questions. Is it, like, I mean, I have some knowledge of how the condominium act works, having lived in one, but I'm wondering if there's anyone on staff that can sort of explain that it's the condominium owners themselves that actually direct all the maintenance, once all the units are
Certainly. And I appreciate the frustration of the tenants, and I know Mrs. Rienzo is speaking on a number of their concerns, and we had previous discussions with Ms. Rienzo last week, and I did direct her to parties at the provincial level who could dissister of some of her questions to be answered. We have some additional questions we'd like to have answered though as well. And let's, let's work with the first one, and Councilor Peter Angel, I appreciate your comments, so we'll work towards getting some of those questions answered. Mr. Hirlovich, with regard to the vacancy rate, do you have any comments to make with regard to Ms. Rienzo's comments?
Only to agree with her that the vacancy rate has been declining. Yes, the CMHC does their vacancy rate survey twice a year, and we've just gone past October, and I understand that the new statistics will come out shortly. She's more up to date, I didn't realize they were December the eleventh, but I expected them any time.
Okay, thank you. And further, we've involved additional questions with regard to tenant landlord advice, and I know that our solicitor has been reluctant to give that independent advice to members of the public, but Mr. Beaman, you would just want to confirm or qualify my comments?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the, the policy, I guess you could say, of the rental protection scheme is endeavors to protect the individual tenants when the, when conversions take place. And in general, that's what
What happens to many buildings that Mrs. Rienzo wrote, I don't think, it would be difficult to detect
A meaningful difference in how the building operates after it's been converted, because the real motivation behind the conversion is not to actually sell units, it's to take advantage of the different tax treatment for condominiums as opposed to, to multiple-unit residential dwellings. Having said that, one can never guarantee the goodwill of the persons that do the conversion and what it is that they intend to do. So I don't want to guarantee the tactics of anyone, but certainly, the law would make an effort to frustrate those tactics if the person was trying to evict everybody and jack up the rents.
Certainly. And I know we're going to hear from the applicant's solicitor, so perhaps he can speak to that. Councilor Peter Angel.
Yeah, thanks, your worship, and maybe for the benefit of Mrs. Rienzo, we can get another question answered that she asked, which I thought was really good. Personally, I, I used to live in a twenty-four-unit condominium complex, and I know that everyone would share in the maintenance costs, and everyone's costs would be equal. And actually, the direction of where we spent our money and how much we spent our money was considered by the board of directors, which was made up in part by the tenants or the people that owned the twenty-four condos. I, I'd be interested to know as well, how it, how it would work if only half of the building was sold to condominiums, and the, and the other half was still rented by apartments.
Thank you. Mr. Beaman, you care to address that, please?
Well, it would actually depend on the condominium agreement that was governing the building, but certainly, I've been involved in some, when I was in private practice, in some really interesting condominiums where there was a large number of units owned by one particular owner, and each unit had a vote. So guess who won all the votes? So that, that's something you have to guard against. I know that there have been amendments to the condominium act to try to get rid of some of the larger abuses, in particular, banks can no longer get your vote, because there used to be these wonderful condominiums where one bank would control three-quarters of the units through the mortgages, and plow everything through, and jack the fees up. Wonderful time those were. But I think that things are, have improved since that time, but I'm not really familiar enough with the condominium, the latest amendments to the condominium act to actually give anybody any particular solace. But I, again, reiterate that the majority of these recent tax-motivated conversions have been done for that purpose alone, and it looks exactly, the building in operation is exactly the same the day after it's converted than it was the day before. The condominium corporation actually, the landlord becomes the condominium corporation and owns all the units, and they just run it out.
Okay. Counselor, anything further?
Perhaps he'll be able to tell us how the act will work.
Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward. Yes? Yes, your name and address, please?
It's Danelda Warren, forty-two eighteen Portage Road, in the building where the applicant is applying for. I'm just confused. I, I've had the letter from this man here mentioning this meeting, and mentioning that we had the right to stay in our unit as long as we live, and just pay the appropriate provincial increase, and, you know, what they recommend every year, cost of living percentage, and, and we pay that now. And then, I'm speaking to a neighbor here, a lady that's here tonight, and she's saying she had spoke to the Ministry of Housing, and that if somebody comes along with a truckload of money to our landlord, we're evicted. And she, she's quite clear that she had talked to them, and that's what the ministry, so I'm very confused. I don't have funds to buy my unit, and I wouldn't, because it's an older building, and I, I just, many reasons I wouldn't, but I like it, I like being there, and I am settled there, and I'm just wondering how that affects me.
We'll get your question answered. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Helen Kane, forty-two eighteen Portage Road, unit two oh one. I did call the housing authority, and they explained to me, I told them about the apartment building, and what would happen if it was changed to a condominium, and could we refuse and keep the, keep it as an apartment? And they explained to me that if someone came and put down some money and said, I want two oh one, that he would have the authority to give me notice to leave.
Well, they have to respect your tenancy, ma'am, and I'm not sure what form of tenancy you have. Do you have a written lease?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and I don't want to offer any legal advice, but Mr. Beaman, would you care to come?
I think the situation the person is speaking to is, the, the advice was given in relation to is an individual that wants to live in that particular unit. It's always been a case in, with rental housing way back to the seventies, when they first started rent controls, that if somebody bona fide and wanted to live in the rental property and bought the place, then they could evict the tenant. Again, that has not been the pattern with these buildings, and perhaps when they're represented, or they can explore an act of moderation and notice after, and this recent state of convergence since we've started in there, two thousand and six.
Okay, thank you.
Just around the time the assessment act was amended.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hirlovich?
Just to clarify, because we did send out a notice and said tenants wouldn't be evicted. You can't just convert the building and then give everybody a notice, but you can convert the building, and then you offer the unit to that person if they would like to buy it. If they say, I can't buy it, I don't want to buy it, then they can offer that unit to someone else. And that someone else, then, if they're moving in for the purposes of occupying it or for their own personal use, their child is going to move into it, then, yes, they have the right to give an eviction notice
True.
With the act, providing the required number of days. And I believe that's what the housing authority was saying, so that there, there is a process, but you can't just convert it and then give them a notice, but someone new could buy it. But I believe it says, Mr. Beaman, and I, or at least I hope we'll hear from the proponent, as to whether or not they actually intend to sell them. Most of the time, they convert them and retain ownership of the building, and the units are rented out in that basis, so we'll learn that maybe later.
Also, I would like to know that if it has been changed over to a condominium, would they change the aluminum wiring? It's not a happy camper deal, I'll tell you right now.
And that's not an issue before this council, it's not a planning matter, so
Okay.
That, that's a building code issue.
Okay, that's a building code issue? Okay, I hope they check that out.
Many buildings have been built with aluminum wiring at that time, but
I know, but when you've had it about fifty years, that wiring isn't so hot. Like, there's a lot of outlets that don't work, because there's no wire left. So that's not a condominium.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak to this matter? You've already spoken, thank you. Well, unless there's another qualification you want to make, you've had your time. Okay, thank you. At this time, then, there's no one else. We'll, we'll hear from the applicant or his representative. Would you please come forward?
Worship, members of council, I'd just like to say a few things about this particular conversion. The one thing on a conversion that people should realize, that the building will improve, the, you, you people approved the one on Dorchester Road, and if you've been by it, you can see they spent a lot of money on it. We have to do all kinds of site improvements on this building. That's in your, the, the conditions of approval. The building actually will improve. If I was a tenant in the building, it's going to be improvements outside, it's going to be, like, the garbage disposal thing's going to be covered in properly. There's all kinds of site things we have to do. We have to satisfy the city. We have to enter into agreement with the city. The building The building will improve, there's no question about that. As far as the tenants are concerned, and the, and the monthly payments, they're paid by the landlord. Landlord pays all the, all the costs, the electrical, the gas, and so forth. That's, that will remain. If it, and you're quite right, Mr. Hurlovich is quite right, if I bought the building, say I bought the whole 18 units, if I wanted my daughter, for example, to move into a particular unit, I think I could give notice, which you can do now, which we can do now as a tenant, and I could do it as it was converted to condominium. But obviously, anybody buying it isn't going to want to convert, it's going to, can't move into 18 units. So that's not, it's not going to happen if he actually proceeds and, and actually goes ahead and sells it. And if he sells it, and he's got five sold, and he's got 13 that aren't sold, if there's a condominium corporation created, okay, the condominium corporation has to act fairly to all the people, and the 13 units are going to have to pay the common expenses as the five do. So it doesn't really, shouldn't really affect, affect any, any of the unit owners. If anybody buys the building and all the tenants are there, the rents would, would stay the same. It's just be like, it'd be exactly the same as if, if there was one owner on it, as there is now. Be no difference. But as I say, if it's converted, it actually improves the, improves the, the building because, because of the agreement you have to enter into, because of certain things we have to do, and there's a lot of things in there we have to do, 5% for park dedication and so forth. This one's quite, this is quite a good building, doesn't need a lot of things, a lot of parking, there's 28 parking spaces. It's an excellent, excellent, excellent building. There is, obviously, this lady's had some problems with them, but there is the rent tribunal, she's been there a couple of times, obviously, got them to fix the building up. And that's a, that's a course that they can continue to follow, even if it's a condominium. But been a condominium, you're going to find that, I think that the building will improve because once it's actually in a condominium, it's actually sold as a condominium, they have to put money into the kitty for long-term, things like fixing the roof and so forth and so on. Once they do that, the condominium corporation usually gets a manager to manage the building, and they do a much better job probably than this gentleman is doing. He probably isn't doing a very good job. So if, if he, if he actually sells the units, he'll do that. I think it'll improve things more. If he doesn't, nothing really changes. So that's the way it is. But certainly, been a condominium will improve the situation.
Just a few questions that were presented, Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Renzo said that the, there are 19 units on site. This application is for 18. Can you address that?
Yeah, that's, I think that's reflected in your report. It says apparently there's, there was 19 people, 19 tenants, but we only made, but 19, there's still enough parking and everything else, and we have to, on the one unit, I think, have to comply with the building code and refer to do that. We have to bring it up to standards. That's in your, in your report there.
Okay. And are there any questions from members of council? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, through yourself to Mr. Sinclair, thank you for addressing, I guess, the, the mixed ownership of the building. What you're saying, then, if there's 18 units and nine of them are owned and, and nine of them are rented, if there's maintenance that's done, and then there's a, there's a fee that has to be paid, the renters would be paying their normal monthly rent?
Right.
And then the owner of those apartments would pay the portion of the rent?
Yes.
So they wouldn't be charged more on top of...
No, they never are.
And they can't, right?
They can't do it.
Okay, I understand.
Dictated by the lease and common fees to be paid by the owners of the units.
Actually, actually, really, if I was a tenant, I'd say, gee, this is really good. I'd want it, I want to see it. It's very unusual. Obviously, this isn't, maybe my client isn't the best landlord, but I've, I've never been at one where the tenants have ever complained. Usually, the tenants are happy. I know I did a conversion in my building, and nobody, nobody complained.
Any further questions from members of council? How about those, for those present? Any other further questions for those present who wish to ask the applicant's representative with regard to clarification? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Diane Cunningham, and I reside at 4218 Portage Road. While the building is being upgraded, does that mean we have, I'm going to have a maintenance man and all this going on while the, the aluminum wiring is fixed, while the plumbing is fixed, while the mold problems are fixed? Do I get to live in my apartment and have nobody come in? I just want to live my life in my rented apartment? Or is this going to be going on in my apartment to upgrade the whole building?
Oh, no, I won't do that.
Let's go back to him.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Thank you all. All right, Mr. Sinclair, can you address that, please?
They're not going to do that. I don't, he wouldn't do that. I think mainly, it's, it's things outside, basically, the parking, other, other aspects. I don't think the individual units are going to be touched. I mean, it'd be very, very strange. If they want to go in and, if somebody moves out, they might want to go in and obviously fix up the apartments, do things like that, or maybe he wants to put new stoves and fridges in. I think everybody'd be happy with that. You know, this sort of thing, but he's certainly not going to, I don't, I didn't know anything about the wiring, but I don't think he'd change...
So how does, how does he fix the wiring? He can't give the apartment to us.
Trying to get your questions answered, I think he understands that. So, Mr. Sinclair, do you have any comments to offer?
Not really, no. It's, if it's, if it's, there's no problem with the wiring, the building's been there since 1974. It's still there, it hasn't burned down, so I guess it must be all right.
Any other questions? Members of council, any other questions? Okay, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Well, Your Worship, have you closed the meeting yet?
Not yet.
Okay. I, I was just going to see, I mean, I know that Ms. Renzo did have some questions that were answered directly, just if she had a response to them, because I know that she wanted to say something.
Yes. Are there any other questions that you... Yes. We're just trying to address all your concerns as tenants.
Yeah. In the application, I understand that there were some problems with the parking stall lengths, the driveway width, garbage enclosures, and obviously, the status of the 19th apartment, we've already cleared up. But what is specifically the issue regarding the parking stall lengths and the driveway width and the garbage enclosure? I would like some answers to that. And as far as the memorandum that we were given that says we cannot be evicted, and yet we're given an opportunity of first refusal, well, now we've just found out that we can be evicted. My biggest problem is that I am current, I just recently went through an eviction hearing because I helped a tenant with a serious mold issue, and on the heels of my helping her, getting the health department in there and getting the proper remedies to her apartment, on the heels of that, I got an eviction notice. Now, because the landlord didn't have grounds, they said they want their daughter to occupy my unit. Well, we know that that's a very hard thing to defend, but I did, and I won. Now he's appealing. Unfortunately, due to the death of a tenant, there is an apartment available from me across the hall, and it is my understanding, the deceased, the mother of the deceased told me that the daughter, the landlord's daughter, will not be occupying that unit. My, this landlord is making a mockery of the Residential Tenancy Act, abusing the privilege of, of the Residential Tenancy Act. I have no reason to believe that this landlord is going to be any more cooperative, given the opportunity to convert condo. Further to that, now that I know that I can be evicted, as soon as he gets this conversion done, my apartment will be the first one that he's going to convert to a condominium. I have a chance in hell of staying at 4218 Portage Road. His daughter will occupy it. His daughter admitted she won't be paying rent if she takes an apartment. Daddy's paying the rent. I am on my way out the door of 4218 if this, if this is approved.
Mr. Hurlovich, could you address the parking stall sizes, please, and issues?
The, the report basically says that the undersized parking stalls would be addressed through minor variances, so the, the parking stalls wouldn't actually change. They would get site-specific approvals for the size and dimensions that are addressed in the, in the plan. They would upgrade the, the garbage enclosure. The, now, there isn't, there isn't any requirement to upgrade any of the units. That would be up to the proponent as to whether or not he wished to do that.
Thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo, anything further? Okay. Other members of council, any further questions? I think we've had sufficient discussion and dialogue. We know that there is provincial legislation in place that deals with the tenancy matters, and I know that the applicant solicitor, solicitor did qualify that, and those are matters that'll be heard before another tribunal. But as far as the matters go with regard to planning, we're dealing with those here this evening, so we're sensitive to certainly your concerns that you expressed as well. So at this point, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of condominium is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Yes, Counselor Wing?
I'll make a motion to deny the application based on what I've heard tonight, and also, the vacancy rate is hovering just barely above, as of April, the cutoff rate, the cutoff level. And we don't know what the results of the October survey were. It could be below 3% at that point, at this point, so, you know, I'm just not at all comfortable with this application as it sits tonight, so my motion is to deny.
Motion denies, or a second to that motion? Counselor DiDati? Are you seconding the motion?
Not exactly, Worship. I just want some clarification. The December 11th vacancy rate, date, I'm just kind of curious if somebody can enlighten me as to, do they, do they go, look at the date of application and the vacancy rate at that date, or how does that work? Which, which comes first? That's what I'm trying to figure out, Your Worship, because I'm, I'm, I'm sitting on the fence on this one, I'm not exactly sure, but that would help clarify things for me.
Let's see if we can answer to your question. We don't have a second to the motion at this point, is that correct? All right, so, so far, there's no, no second, but we'll just have that clarified. I'm going to ask the Director of Planning if he could deal with CMHC stats and when they come out, twice a year, I believe, and do you, have you a policy in place with respect to what figures you're using? Are the most current figures you use, or are you waiting for the new figures?
We use the figures that are available at the time that the application is made. It was the tenant that said they were coming out in December the 11th. She either got that from CMHC or from visiting the website. As I said, I know they're coming out shortly, but the exact release date, I wasn't aware of.
The figures we're using was the first quarter, our first-half results, is that correct?
Our report actually says October, I thought it said...
Yes, okay. All righty, so those are the most recent figures, Counselor DiDati? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, there's no second. The motion, the motion fails. Pleasure, council.
I think I have a solution. Yeah, well, let's defer this application until after the December date, and we'll deal with it then. I think it's only fair.
Okay, that's fair. We have a motion to defer by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any further comment or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. So this matter has been deferred, and we'll await the decision, I guess, of the next information we receive from CMHC. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Members of council, I just wanted to make some comments this evening by offering, first of all, condolences to the family of Ms. Sue Cerbo of our planning department on the passing of her mother, Italia Cerbo. We offer our thoughts and sympathy to the family during this difficult time. I'd like to take a moment to note some recent events in the world economy that are affecting decisions at every level of government, including certainly our municipality here as well. The effects of the current global economic conditions are certainly being felt by all levels, including here at the local government level. I've heard from members of the public about their concern of being able to pay as we all deal with council's slowing economy. Please be assured that as we enter into budget discussions, we know that we will have to find efficiencies in order to continue to provide the level of service to residents that we have been able to in the past years. As many of you already know, the province is rejecting a deficit, and we at City Hall will have to identify our priorities here at the local level. And first and foremost, we have to consider our residents' ability to pay taxes and how that might be affected with the difficult economic factors that abound. With the current economic situation affecting private sector businesses, governments at all levels, and residents, we too can, cannot be too careful to, or mindful of every decision we make with the taxpayers' dollar. So I wanted to assure the, our residents that we will no doubt, there will be no doubt having to address these matters of changing times in our upcoming budgets and projections. I'd also been pleased to inform residents of some of our recent notable events that have taken place in our community, and I was pleased to announce that the Winter Festival of Lights has officially opened for this year. On November the 8th, we kicked off the festivities, and I was pleased to note that there has already been a wonderful support of the events and celebrations this year. I'd like to thank the organizing committee for this year's City of Niagara Falls Remembrance Day Ceremony, and once again, it was a fitting tribute to our veterans and soldiers. This past Saturday, we had the 1812 Bicentennial Gala. I'd like to thank the museum staff and the committee volunteers who worked to put this event together. It marked the beginning of a number of bicentennial celebrations commemorating the War of 1812, and this event highlighted the fundraising efforts for the Museum Legacy Project. And coming up, there are some important events taking place I'd like to share with all of you, including the Niagara Falls Optimist Youth Appreciation Awards being held tomorrow night. I'd like to congratulate all the youth who are being honored by the Optimist Club, and we appreciate your efforts in contributing to our community and making our city a great place to live. And as well, the City of Niagara Falls Santa Claus Parade will take place on Saturday, November 29th. I welcome everyone to come and see this year's new and improved parade. This year's route runs from Jepson and Army along Victoria to Valley Way and on to Queen Street, wrapping up at City Hall. I hope to see many of you downtown on Saturday, November 28th, for the Santa Claus Parade beginning at 11:00 a.m. Thank you very much. Move on to communications and comments from the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, the issue, first of all, the issue request to provide services for a Niagara Falls entry for Craft Hockeyville 2009 by Mr. Simon, there is a recommendation contained in your handouts this evening.
Move the clerk's recommendation.
Move the clerk's recommendation, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Thank you. It's carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No, Your Worship.
Okay. Move on to reports, the ratification of Corporate Services Committee actions. I'm going to call on Counselor Peter Angelo to present those as chair.
Thank you, Worship. Following items that were ratified from tonight's meeting of the Corporate Services Committee. First, at the minutes in November 3, 2008 meeting, be adopted as recorded. Under reports, we had CPS 200804 dealing with the water and sewer rate structure and the public response. We had four recommendations. First, that the committee receive the public responses to the public consultation. Second, that the committee recommend the endorsement of the eight principles received in the Water and Sewer Rate Structure Review by R.M. Loudon Limited. Third, that the committee does not recommend the endorsement of the nine recommendations received from R.M. Loudon Limited for a new water and sewer rate structure. And four, that the committee direct staff to prepare recommendations for a water and sewer rate structure that fulfills the eight principles, considers the region's review of water and sewer charges, and responds to the concerns raised via the public consultation. And I believe, Your Worship, that is expected to be back before March 1st of 2009. Under 2009 funding requests, it was recommended that the 2009 funding requests from Niagara Falls Tourism be referred to final budget liberations. As well, Your Worship, we refer to final budget liberations, the financial submissions from Niagara District Airport and the downtown BIA for the 2009 events. Further, Your Worship, under the 2009 budget presentation, it was recommended that staff report back to council in regards to developing a nice cancellation policy, increasing existing user fees, and to investigate the development of new fees. And also, Your Worship, that staff report back to council on the 2009 operating budget in respect to expenditures in a manner wherein expenditures are categorized as high, medium, and low priority. And I would so move the minutes.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions by members of council? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Counselor, any issues? Yes, Counselor Fisher?
I'd be delighted to see you consent.
Moved by Counselor Fisher, the entire consent agenda, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or comments or amendments to the bylaws?
Mr. Worship, there's an additional bylaw that was in your handouts, which will be 2008-2000, and it's the bylaw executing the consultant agreement for the people mover, which was the direction of council. I know there's a deferral request that I think Counselor Wing will speak to.
Yes, Counselor Wing?
Yes, I'll move that it be deferred to the next meeting as per Counselor Anone's request. She hasn't had a chance yet to speak or vote on it, and I do have some points she sent me that I think I would rather not debate publicly. It's probably better behind, in camera.
Well, we have a motion to defer that bylaw. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the report, but I think out of courtesy, I would second the motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer...
We have a motion to defer at this point on the floor. Is there any further comments or questions? Having seen none?
May you can't debate.
Yep, that's right. All those in favor, deferral? One, two, three. Opposed? Motion is failed, so thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then. We have a motion to introduce the bylaws. Bylaws begin the first reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diaddi. Council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Okay. I guess I'll have to bring forward the points that Counselor Iannone emailed me earlier today. She tells me that between our two acting CAOs, Mrs. Burden and Dulevik, and you, Mr. Mayor, and our former mayor, there's already four senior people working on the People Mover project. She points out that this is almost a half million dollars in salaries. Mr. McDonald had 10 weeks to ready Mr. Burden and Mr. Dulevik, whom he recommended be our acting CAOs. He had 10 weeks to fill them in and get them ready to take over the reins of this project, and he didn't do it. And now he wants us to pay him to continue the work on it. She asks, why pay him $640 a day to come back and do the job that he retired from instead of delegating it to the staff who are quite qualified to deal with the People Mover file? She said, stop wasting the taxpayers' dollars, and I have to concur. You know, we just heard, once again, under the mayor's remarks, about the slowing economy and the need to find efficiencies, and, you know, here's somebody who's just retired, should have done this before he retired, and didn't. And we already have four people working on this who are up to speed. There is absolutely no need to do this. I am not supporting that particular bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Thompson?
First of all, the People Mover topic is one that is extremely complex. It's been going on for probably 20 years, and you cannot just throw it into somebody's hands and expect them to be able to carry on and do that job. The motion that was passed a couple of weeks ago, I had some concerns because I think regarding the appeal for the casino, I think Mr. Burden is quite capable. Mr. Dulevik, and my comments with him indicated that he had been substantially, doing a substantial amount of work regarding the four pad arena, and so I was not in favor, and I think they have a responsibility to carry on and do that. The People Mover is totally unique. You have to have a great deal of knowledge and background to push that forward. There is a date coming up in June '09 when there will be a possibility that we could lose $25 million for the People Mover from the federal government, which is a grant already sitting there, waiting for us to move ahead with it. I think that it's imperative that we move extremely quickly to that date. The private sector has come in with suggestions on which direction they want to move at this particular time. I don't personally support that, but I'm not willing to let $25 million slip out of our hands. So I think it's prudent, even if there was a time limit put on to the end of June, for Mr. McDonald to be involved, to actively pursue this application. I'm on the committee, but I'm certainly not in a position where I'm going to be preparing reports and documentation, and there is a consultant who could do some of that, given the proper direction. So I think the motion, as it's posed, is appropriate, and I would support that.
Mr. Clerk?
I just want to reiterate that the actual agreement is only specific to the People Mover, and that will be the only project.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Well, Your Worship, I concur with Counselor Thompson. You know, there's a chance that we could lose a $25 million grant from the federal government. This is a, even though it seems like a lot of money, it's a good investment, I think, on behalf of the city to keep Mr. McDonald involved in the project, if he's willing to do so. We had a full discussion at this, on this topic. Come to the meeting if you want to discuss it.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I also concur with the other two counselors, Counselor Carrio and Counselor Thompson, that already got up and spoke. Just one correction that I'd like to make. It's not $640 a day, Your Worship, it's $640 a week, as it is clearly outlined in the bylaw, where it says, "Whereas a close meeting on October 3, Niagara Falls City Council directed staff to offer a contract to the consultant for eight hours a week to work on the People Mover system." Not a day, Your Worship. The other thing, Your Worship, that we were advised is that if we had to go out and we had to hire a consultant, it would have been a heck of a lot more money than to keep the continuity of Mr. McDonald, who knows a lot about the project, Your Worship. So I'm in full support of it.
I agree, and I certainly add my comments to those that have already been stated, which are the obvious, and certainly, we're all working towards providing a solution to the congestion we have, and this is for the sake of the stakeholders. We do have money at stake, substantial contribution by the federal government, which we're trying to protect and to work with. So no question, Mr. McDonald has the depth of knowledge. He was carrying that project forward, as you know, and has been working on it on a regular basis while he was here as our CAO. I know there was total concurrence when we met last with regard to the possibility of Mr. McDonald continuing forward, so we did make him an offer. He's accepted that offer, and I certainly would be glad to support it as well. So we do have a request for the ratification of the bylaws. Are there any other comments with respect to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third? Sorry, Mr. Clerk, can I stand?
What was that?
Oh, that was the deal with the first introducing the bylaws.
So I assume you're just opposed to the one bylaw?
That's right.
Okay. Bylaws 2008-195 to 2008-201, read a first time.
You have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diaddi. And once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2008-195 to 2008-201, read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Any new business this evening, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Hey, Your Worship, in the Niagara Falls review on the weekend, there were a couple articles that dealt with property standards, I think, in specific along McCray Street. And I know that staff has been, has been working with homeowners, and I don't think that staff has been able to actually tell their side of the story. And I'm wondering, I guess, Your Worship, through you, perhaps to Mr. Dulevik, if Mr. Dulevik can let council, as well as the public, know what staff does on a consistent basis to try to clean these up.
You know, I did direct the reporter to sit with our chief building official as well, to get some of those matters clarified, that there are complete files kept on all those properties, and so I invited him to sit with them. That was after the story was done, but I'm sure that we'd be glad to hear from Mr. Dulevik with respect to those property standard issues.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counselor Peter Angelo. Yeah, I did follow up with staff and, and, I followed the newspaper article on it, and I looked at our records. It's out there, not only for the housing question, but it was something that there were other problems on McCray Street, and there are three properties in question. I'll deal first with the property that was highlighted in the article. Since 1999, staff have responded to 20 complaints at that property. There have been 10 property standard violations, five clean yard bylaw issues, one noise, and four of them have been property standards and clean yard bylaw issues that have been dealt with. Matter of fact, in the past year, we've been out to that property six times to deal with issues. And in two of those cases, the city has initiated cleanups and have put that cleanup cost against the taxes on that property. It's unfortunate. It seems like nothing's done, but things are being done. And the unfortunate thing is, there seems to be continuing violations at this property. And unfortunately, I think it's because it is a rental property and the type of tenants that in, that are there that are causing these problems. So just, you know, we are following up with it. We are taking action. And in this particular property, we got to the point where we had to go in there, get a contractor in there, clean it up, and have put those costs under the tax rule. There are a couple of other properties on McCray. I won't give the addresses, but the same type of problems. Actually, they're side by side, very close to the one on, at, in the same area, very close to 4934. Again, since 1999, this one property has had 26 complaints that have been registered that have staff has dealt with, sorry, since 1998. Again, in '06 and in '08, we had to go out there again with contractors. We hired contractors to go in there and clean up the property, and it was put against their taxes to have it cleaned up. So once again, in previous ones, the owner, the property owner, has taken care of the problem subsequent to that. The cities had to move in. Once again, unfortunately, it's one of these properties that has been a continual problem that staff has had to deal with. The property has been sold recently. We're hoping maybe things will change with the new owners. There's another property, again, in the area, again, 21 calls to our department, to bylaw departments since 1999. Same type of things, property standards, clean yard zoning, unsafe building order was issued. Again, actually, this went from '99 to '05. In '05, we had to, twice, the city had to go out there with a contractor, clean up, and put it on the tax rules. The property was sold in late '05, and we haven't had any problems since then. So this just gives you a little bit of a summary of what's going on out there, although I appreciate the frustration of the property owners out there. But when you have these continual problems, staff is responding to them and dealing with it. If you have a property owner who doesn't care what's going on out there, you see these problems continuing. And, you know, we have been aggressive where we've had to call contractors. Have they put it on the tax rules to get it cleaned up? Because we're not getting cooperation from the property owner.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, and I appreciate Mr. Dulevik's submission. I just wanted to highlight, I guess, the council and to the public as well, that staff in the council don't take these property matters lightly, and that staff does go out there, and they do play the tough guy. And, I mean, as you heard from Mr. Dulevik, you know, over the course of 10 years, they've been out to different properties over 20 times. They have laid charges. The charges then have been transferred over onto the tax rule. So I guess it's a matter of, what do you do when you have a tenant that just wanted, doesn't want to conform with the bylaws?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that forward, because I know that we do enforce the bylaws, especially when there are complaints filed, and I think that that requires the balanced side of the comments that we've heard this evening. So I think sometimes the level of expectation by our residents, when they don't fully appreciate the process or the procedure, sometimes their level of expectation is greater than what we can actually perform by having to give statutory notice to have things completely complied and cleaned up. So they do follow that enforcement very well. So thank you for bringing it forward. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, not just that, Your Worship, but I guess I should mention that you can't actually stop a property owner from putting the junk there. The only thing you can do is have it taken away and not to stop obviously doing it.
Exactly. Thank you. Counselor Maves?
Along that same line, is this considered junk, or how does, how do you main, how do you verify what, what the property is? What I'm getting at is, when we go back to some of these places that have excess automobiles in their property, is it because they're licensed, they're allowed to do that? Is there a definition or something that's different than pile of automobiles in your yard, or parts, or anything?
Each one is a new challenge.
Well, I was just wondering about that, because...
Factors like the whether, whether you can start it up and make it go, whether it's licensed, whether it's got a chance for, those are the kind of things you do. We change the lot of, it's easier for us by finding the areas where you can park the cars, and you get a hold of some of the other ones that come along. But usually, until you get a guy that's really determined, like that one fellow who's quite famous out of the yellow for some time. Once they have to put plates on them, they start getting rid of them, because it just costs too much to keep them there. So that's...
I just wondered if there's a definition?
Yes, oh yeah, it's defined.
That's what it is. It's a, okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Another issue?
Sure.
Your Worship, in our package, there's a letter from the chairman of the Niagara Parks looking for our support, petitioning the federal government on an issue regarding flights into Canada. I don't know if everybody read that.
I didn't get one, did you?
Looking for our support, just quickly, later on this month in Vancouver, the Canadian government will be negotiating the future airlift of inbound Korean flights into Canada. This letter explains how the government is going to rule on it, and he's looking for council's support. It would be good for our industry. I just think we should support his initiative.
Make that motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Diaddi?
Thank you, Worship. I have three items. First item is in regard to the downtown. Well, I haven't had an item in a while from the new business, so I thought I, I'm okay. Anyway, first item is, I'd like to put a motion on the floor, Your Worship, that whereby we would, this council would create a steering committee for the downtown, which would be composed of elected members of this council, as many as that would be willing to, to serve, put in some time, and volunteer, senior staff, and as well as members of the BIA. And there's five main objectives of this steering committee, Worship. First one would be to take ownership and direction of the vision that we want to see in downtown Niagara Falls. That'd be the first. Secondly, to go after funding from other levels of government that is out there, but we have not pursued it as of yet. Thirdly, to explore private support for the different projects, like beautification, theater, and otherwise. Fourth, to assess how the public taxpayer can get return on investment in the downtown. Because the way it is now, with empty buildings, deteriorating buildings, we're not getting our money back out of the downtown. That's something that costs the residents of the city to have it so that it's producing a return on our investment. And lastly, Your Worship, is to get a municipal action plan put together that we can go forward with. Rather than the tail wagging the dog, we can give some direction of what's happening downtown. And this committee, depending on whatever amount of members, would not make any decisions. It would just make recommendations to this council for some future direction. So Worship, I would make the motion that this steering committee be struck, starting with, as I just mentioned, Your Worship.
Hey, Counselor Peter Angelo, second to the motion? Yes, I think it's a great idea. We did talk about the matter when we had the presentation by the Downtown BIA, and I think that was the next step that we were possibly looking at. Mr. Clerk?
Well, as the clerk, I hate all committees, so I'll just go on the record saying that. But having said that, we have asked the downtown to provide us with what exactly they're envisioning on this. And I mean, when you talk about committees, you have to be careful. I mean, who's going to be making the decision? Are you, I appreciate towards the end, you said that, you know, this committee wouldn't actually, you know, it would just make recommendations. It wouldn't, you know, take any power delegated from council. So, I mean, I think we need some more details on it, and I know that the BIA was supposed to send us something on that.
Counselor?
Yes, in, in response to the clerk's query, I agree with what you're saying, and that's why I think that we're forming this committee. We have had some discussion with some members of the Downtown BIA, and it's a direction that, I think for too long, we've been waiting for proposals, and we're saying yea or nay, rather than us kind of directing the proposals and directing the direction. And I think the people around this council, we've got a lot of expertise here. That would, that should be a part of the direction of the downtown. I think the problem that we've been doing up until now is, we've been waiting to see which way the wind's been blowing, and whether it's in our favor or not, whether we want to support it or not. I think the idea here is that us, with senior staff and the Downtown BIA, roll up our sleeves, decide a direction, and then bring that suggestion back to this council for approval or otherwise.
All right, that's, yes, Counselor Wing?
I think there's already a committee to advocate for the Queen Street area, and it is the BIA. And I seem to remember that there's also a plan in place, and that's the CIP. You know, anything else is superfluous, and I don't think this is a direction in which we should be going whatsoever. I agree with the clerk on this one.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Maves?
I think they've done remarkable work downtown the last, I'd say, the last year anyway, and they're working hard, and I think what they're looking for, at is just some direction. I don't think they're looking for anybody to come up with any miracles, but they like to get access, if there's any provincial grants, federal grants. For instance, they were, I talked to them today, and they said that they found out that Burlington got some, some provincial money and some federal money. And if it's any way the city can influence that, that sort of thing, that's kind of what they want. what they want. They want some direction, would like to have a committee of people from city staff and council, just to help them out. And I don't think there's any giant obligation on our part. It's just some, some steering and some, some help that they require.
Okay. Yes, comments? Counselor Wing?
Well, then I would suggest we probably need that for our other CIP area as well. I mean, I just had a big back and forth with Mr. Drin over the weekend, or leading up to the weekend, about letting the left hand know what the right hand's doing, and bringing, you know, people to the table to discuss. Just tonight, we approved a report for a transit facility in the New Market Building, and transportation seemed to be going in a different direction. I mean, we really need that for Main and Ferry, because, you know, people down there are trying to access grants as well. The, I can't speak about the museum, but, you know, they've been trying to go after federal and provincial grants, and I'm quite sure there's other people in the Main and Ferry area who'd like to be able to do the same thing. So if we're going to do for one, we've got to do for the other. And what about West Lundie's Lane? You know, there's some real struggles for survival going on over there. Are we going to just focus exclusively on one area of the city and neglect all the others, or are we going to offer the same intense, you know, working relationship for everybody else as well? If we want to be fair, that's what we have to do.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, the clerk indicated he was waiting to hear back from, from the downtown area. I think he heard back from the downtown area. And I think this is just a step forward, to try to focus, and if you want to do the same thing at Main and Ferry or anyplace else, and you get people who support it on council, I think that there have been some good things happening downtown, and I think they just want to get a few of the council involved, along with staff, to move things along a little more quickly, and that's why I support Mr. Gruen's motion.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, and I think I just want to add that, I mean, I don't think it's the right thing to do, to do absolutely nothing, because we might offend some other areas. I mean, I agree with Counselor Thompson. If there's other areas, I think that they need help, then come on down to City Hall and talk to us. But I mean, we, we can't just do nothing, because then we'll be no further ahead.
Sure, that's fair. Okay, and Mr. Clerk, you want to make comment?
No, I mean, I'm not sure having a committee speeds things up. I actually think it slows things down, because you have another layer of possible recommendation or decision-making. As far as grants, you don't need a committee. We've got staff in place that are always on the lookout for grants. We have a person in our planning department that deals with CIP applications, and in fact, I think we've got a report going to the next meeting regarding the grant at the region. Our business development department are always looking for it. And if the BIA has a program that they want the city to make an application, all they have to do is make the request, and I'm sure we'd be happy to make an application.
We have a motion before us. Members of council will call the vote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, opposed? One. Motion is carried. Yes, Counselor Di Addati?
Worship, could we ask for those members around the table, since we're in the mood of downtown supporting, who would like to sit on that committee?
Okay. Well, asking, fine, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Fisher, Counselor Maves, Counselor Di Addati, and myself, included. Pardon? Counselor Peter Angelo? Perhaps? Okay.
Wait a minute, now we've got all the council.
Counsel, they haven't quite, but...
I think it's, we all want to help. It's a different board than S and M, we all want to help.
Yes, Mr. Clerk?
I think the appropriate thing is for us to get that from the downtown. They're supposed to be sending us some sort of proposal on the committee. We'll come back with a staff report on what's the best vehicle. Well, I, you know, I don't know what that is.
Okay. Well, members of council, we have passed a motion. We'll have input from the clerk, and at least we've expressed our support, and we'd like to be able to be involved, and we've been making recommendations to ourselves, but obviously, we have an opportunity to take input from the downtown BIA and any other BIA, so that's good points. Counselor Di Addati?
Thank you, worship. Just two other quick points. The one is, I got a call from someone who had overnight parking, and they were ticketed. You know, they received a $40 ticket, and their concern was, we're coming upon the Christmas season where there's going to be a lot of people visiting and perhaps overindulging, and probably better that they park than drive under the influence. And I explained to him, but I thought it probably would be better that we publicly, maybe do a public service announcement through the newspaper and the radio, through staff. And I would make this motion that we let everybody know, if you do have overnight guests, it's a simple matter of phoning the service center. They have an answering service 24 hours, informing them of the license plate and make and vehicle that'll be parked out front. And at least this way, overnight, they won't receive a ticket, and if they do in fact receive a ticket, it will not be followed through.